Good morning. I will now call the city council meeting of Tuesday, February 14th, Valentine's Day, 2017, to order. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Bree, Councilmember Zap, Councilmember Ward, Council President Pro Tim Kersey, Councilmember Kate, Councilmember Sherman, Councilmember Alvarez, Councilmember Gomez, Council President Cole.
Here. We will begin this morning with the pledge allegiance by Councilmember Sherman.
(Inaudible) United States of America and the true republic for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will now proceed with the approval of the council minutes.
Yes, the minutes from the following meetings stand approved by unanimous consent since they were not pulled for discussion by the legislative body. January 2nd, 2017 adjourned, January 3rd, 2017 adjourned, January 9th and 10th, 2017 regular meetings.
We will now dispense with the consent items. Have any items on the consent agenda been pulled by members of the public?
Yes, item 51 was pulled by a member of the public and for item S 500, Nicole Burgess is in favor, but she did not wish to pull it unless it's pulled by somebody else. In addition, let me just note that item 106 is a potential reappointment to the San Diego County Regional Airport Authority Board of Directors of Robert Gleason. Item 107 are potential appointments and reappointments to the Balboa Park Committee, including James Lawson, Victoria Curran, Kenneth Davenport, Dr. Micah Parzen, and Luanne Kanzawa. And item 108 is a potential appointment to the San Diego Business Advisory Board of Justin Forte.
Are there any requests to pull items by the council members? I see Council President Pro Tim Kersey on the lines.
Thank you, Council President. I don't need to pull anything, but I did want to speak in favor of item 106, Mr. Gleason's reappointment to the Airport Authority Board. Unfortunately, he could not be here. He is in Orlando at a conference with SeaWorld, but I did want to speak on behalf of his reappointment. I think most of us know Mr. Gleason, his service to our community, and he's been a true asset on the Airport Authority Board, so more than happy to support his reappointment and look forward to working with him for another few years. And I'm happy to move the balance of the consent agenda, please.
Thank you, Council President Pro Tim Kersey. Councilmember Ward.
Thank you, Council President. I also do not need to pull any items, but I did want to speak as well to item 106 and thank Mr. Gleason for his years of service and his willingness to continue on another term. He's an asset to the Airport Authority, and I really appreciate his willingness to accept another nomination and look forward to the term ahead. As well, I wanted to thank a few constituents on item 107 that are stepping forward to serve on the Balboa Park Committee from District 3, James Lawson of downtown, and Victoria Curran from Raider Golden Hill. Very important that we have my community's perspective on this committee and the work that we're trying to do in Balboa Park. And as well, I want to thank the three institutional appointees, Kenneth Davenport, Dr. Parzen, and Luanne Kanzawa, for their service.
Thank you. Councilmember Gomez?
Yes, I also don't want to pull anything, but I want to make reference to item 104. I want to thank staff, specifically Seth Litchney and Elizabeth Dixon, for going after opportunities to bring more money to the city, specifically when it comes to communities that have been underserved. So this is a great opportunity for us, and so I really want to thank you for that. And I also wanted to acknowledge item 105 as well, also thanking Parks and Rec Department, the grant writer Merritt Dousey, and Albert Cuevas, also once again for going after money to bring into our communities, leveraging city money with opportunity, grant money to really invest in underserved communities. I really want to thank you for that. And 106 as well, I want to acknowledge Robert Gleason for his civic participation to really improve our city. Thank you so much for your willingness to serve again. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmembers Zap.
Thank you. And I also do not wish to pull the item. Just a few quick comments on item S 500. It's Wabaska Street, angled parking. This is actually great news for Point Loma because the actions today will allow us to not only install angled parking, but also install a Class 3 protected bike lane. Yay. We'll have a curb, a bike lane, angled parking, and to my knowledge, this is a first within District 2. In fact, the street was just repaved yesterday. Community could not be happier. On behalf of the community, my office, staff, everyone, for making this possible. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Is Nicole Burgess here? Hey, Nicole, there you are. She's happy too. I like making people happy. So Nicole, we got another win here, so good news. Yay. And we look forward to the restriping. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And on item number 104, no need to pull it, but this action is only the first step to secure the additional funding, but I am very pleased to support the grant application. $5 million would go a long way for the much-needed ADA improvements at Skyline Hills Community Park, as well as the completion of the Guyman Neighborhood Park and Horton Elementary School Joint Use Field. I also noticed the proposed name change from the Guyman Neighborhood Park to the Hawk Pocket Park. This name change was bought by the community and recommended by the Martin Luther King Rec Council in honor of the elementary school's mascot. So Hawk Pocket Park, it is. Thank you to the staff for going after this grant to improve our parks. I'm proud you're taking the vote. The clerk will note the consent agenda.
Yes, and I had a motion by Council President Pro Tim Kersey. Is there a second? Second by Councilmember Ward. And the consent agenda includes all of the items noticed for consent this morning except for item 51, which was pulled by several members of the public.
And thank you. Please note that the items pulled from the consent agenda will be taken in the afternoon session at 2:00 PM. So again, we have a motion by Council President Pro Tim Kersey, second by Councilmember Ward. Please vote. Clerk, please call the roll.
And that passes unanimously.
We will now proceed with proclamations.
Yes, the following proclamations will be presented in council chambers and will stand approved by unanimous consent since they were not pulled for discussion by the legislative body. We do have a number of speakers on these proclamations, but they will be taken at the end of all of the proclamations. Item 30 is Mayor Faulkner, Councilmember Kate, and Councilmember Ward proclaiming the month of February 2017 as 2-1-1 Awareness Month in the City of San Diego.
Good morning, Council President, council members. It's really an honor to be here with my colleague, Councilmember Ward, and celebrating February as 2-1-1 Awareness Month in the City of San Diego. With us today to represent 2-1-1 are 2-1-1 CEO John Ohanian, Executive Vice President Bill York, VP of Government and Community Relations Meg Store, and their board chair, John Grissom. How is in District 6 in Kearney Mesa, 2-1-1 does a phenomenal job connecting San Diegans with a wide variety of resources across multiple platforms. The 2-1-1 team incorporates several programs to assist residents, including food and health assistance, health resources, military and veteran services, and emergency services. They are committed to continually enhancing the level of service provided to its clients, including the new 360 community coordination platform that will launch this year. I look forward to supporting 2-1-1 in their future endeavors and am sincerely grateful for their hard work and dedication to improve the lives of all San Diegans. And now I turn it over to Councilmember Ward.
Thank you, Councilmember Kate. I really appreciate the opportunity to be here, to join my colleague in honoring 2-1-1. I do consider 2-1-1 an extended arm of the city and my office, as they help me connect residents to services every single day, whether it's care for a child or a woman, a veteran, assistance finding food or shelter. They are always there to lend a helping hand, and I know that when I can call 2-1-1, I can get reliable and quick resources and put people in the right direction to get the services that they need. And in particular, for a priority that is very important to me, our homeless community, I really appreciate and thank the leadership and the board for stepping up and joining me at the Regional Task Force on the homelessness to be a partner in our county to address this very critical situation around homelessness facing the San Diego region. I also note that they are a real model for how 2-1-1 can effectively operate, and if you talk about the numbers that they're so proud to promote, the work, the touchpoints that they're able to do out here in the community, 2-1-1 California looks to them for examples of how to do things right. So I can't say enough good things. They are a critical partner, and I'm just proud to support and help raise awareness of all that they are able to do for our residents. Thank you.
So now, the good part, be resolved that this council, for and on behalf of the people of San Diego, does hereby proclaim the month of February 2017 as 2-1-1 Awareness Month in the City of San Diego.
Item 31 is Councilmember Kate proclaiming February 7th, 2017, to be Lunar New Year Day in the City of San Diego.
Good morning, Council President Cole, members of the council. It's that time of year again. We've been able to really establish a pretty, I think, cool tradition here in council chambers for the Lunar New Year. And we're honored, as a city, to celebrate Lunar New Year 2017, and I want to give special thanks to the groups that are here today, members of the Asian Business Association, Asian Pacific American Coalition, Convoy District Partnership, House of China, Pacific Arts Movement, San Diego Chinese Center, San Diego Chinese Historical Museum, and the San Diego Lucky Lion Dancers. And you all have a red envelope to give when we have the celebration, which symbolizes good luck and warding off evil spirits for the new year. And 2017 marks the Year of the Rooster. People born in this year are known to be hardworking, resourceful, courageous, and talented. And 2017 is also known as the Year of the Fire Rooster, a celebration that will not occur again for 60 years. The Lunar New Year is recognized and celebrated by thousands of San Diegans annually at various festivals, parades, and cultural fairs. And as the council member for the 6th district, I take pride in representing a district in which one out of three residents is of Asian descent. The Asian-American community has made lasting contributions to building a bright future in San Diego, and we welcome the new year with hope and prosperity. And so may the Year of the Rooster bring a year of happiness, prosperity, and joy for all. Now be resolved by the City of San Diego that this council, for and on behalf of the people of San Diego, does hereby proclaim February 7th, 2017, as Lunar New Year Day in the City of San Diego. I'd now like to introduce Wendy Iroshima-Khan, President and CEO of the Asian Business Association.
Gung Hua Fuchoi, Happy New Year! Oh my goodness, it's always hard to follow the Lions, and do you ever wonder about the guy or the gal in the back? I hope they have a good chiropractor. We have one here, Dr. Chan. Happy New Year, Honorable Council President Cole, honorable council members and colleagues. Happy New Year. Thank you so much for honoring the APIA community today. We are just thrilled. We like to celebrate, as you can tell, they're still going. Oh my gosh, it hurts my back just looking at them. But thank you so much for this great honor. Thank you so much, Councilmember Kate, one of our original Asian Business Association board members, got to throw that out. If you haven't had enough partying right now, you can continue the party with our APIA community. Tonight is our ABA Asian Business Association Lunar New Year. I know many of you have already RSVP'd. That will be at Emerald, 5:30 to 9:00, until I flash the lights and kick you all out, because people like to stay really late. And then this weekend, the big festivities, Saturday and Sunday, what we call the Big Chinese New Year Fair Downtown, and that's a joint effort of the CCBA, Chinese Historical Museum, and the Chinese Community Center. Kids, family-friendly entertainment, food fun, more Lions, I bet. So thank you very much. It's a great honor.
Bob Kuzuski is our first speaker in opposition. He'll be followed by Hud Collins, who's in favor. Mr. Kuzuski, please come forward. You'll be followed by Hud Collins.
I always learn something when I come to these council meetings. I've known for many years that I was born in the Year of the Rooster, but I did not know I was born in the Year of the Fire Rooster, giving away my age. I don't object to these ceremonial items, but I do want to file an objection to the fact that the public is not allowed to speak on them until after they have been awarded. I believe that breaks the protocol in the Brown Act. The Brown Act says that the public shall have a right to speak on an item before it is decided. It's too late to take back any of the awards that you've given by the time the public gets to speak, and I believe that is improper. So I am officially requesting the city to change the order of the proclamations and ceremonial items so that people are allowed to speak on them prior to them being awarded. Thank you.
Hud Collins?
Good morning, Council President and council members. I'd like to echo what Bob said here. However, the tradition in this council for years is that as soon as the proclamation was awarded, the public would be allowed to speak, not at the end of the entire thing here. That makes no sense. Why would somebody come up here and celebrate something minutes, 15 minutes later? That makes no sense. It should happen not before, but right after. That's where I disagree with Bob on. Now, this is the Year of the Rooster, and I want to celebrate and thank and honor all of our Asian friends, which include the Vietnamese, the Chinese, Mongolian, Korean, Laos, and Singapore, among others. As Councilmember Kate has mentioned, they're very proud people in our community, and they do a successful job at almost everything, including, I believe, the Asian Film Festival will be coming up pretty soon here. Like Councilwoman Kate mentioned, the animal celebrates characteristics that include courage, responsibility, resourcefulness, and hard work. The council should take heed of those characteristics and start to address the major problems in this city. I've said for months, we have an illegal fraudulent government, but more importantly, a financial crisis. So let's apply some of those characteristics of the Rooster to what you do this particular year among the council here. It is very important that we address those problems. Once again, Year of the Rooster, and a salute to all the Asian people in this city. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes the proclamations, ceremonial items, in chambers this morning.
And that isn't considered park space, then?
Not this portion. The central operations yard is split between historically a portion in Golden Hill and a portion in Balboa Park, which of course is planned for a sports park.
Got it. Okay. Well, again, I want to thank everybody for their work. I certainly want to thank the planning group for this modification that I think makes sense. I appreciate your thoughtfulness in that, and my concerns remain on the climate action plan. It's something that we just have to, you know, work our way through going forward. But again, appreciate all the work. Thank you.
It was actually seconded by Councilmember Cole. Are there any further questions or comments relative to this action today? Is it possible to get the motion on the screen, please? Just one last check it out, please.
I'll flex my motion. Thank you.
And the city attorney has no opinion on this one? That's correct?
No, we're good.
We're good, okay. With that, we do have a motion by Councilmember Gloria, seconded by Councilmember Cole. Please vote. Clerk, please call the roll. That motion passes unanimously. With that, clerk, would you please introduce item 331? Thank you all very much.
Item 331, Golden Hill Impact Fee Study Fiscal Year 2017. Frank January, project manager, and Scott Mercer, supervising management and analyst planning department, are listed as staff. We do have about three public speakers, one in opposition and two in favor.
How much time would you like for your presentation?
We'll take three minutes.
Three minutes, okay. You're on.
Good evening. My name again is Frank January, Planning Department. I am also the project manager for the Golden Hill Development Impact Fee. Today's action for consideration is approval of the fiscal year 2017 impact fee study for the Golden Hill community and the associated diff schedule. The proposed impact fee study, formerly referred to as the Public Facilities Financing Plan, replaces the current plan, which was last updated in August 2004. This impact fee study will serve as the implementation document for the Golden Hill Community Plan, which was just approved with the PDP modification, which added 30 dwelling Staff recommends approval of the impact fee study with certain modifications to be consistent with changes that were made in the motion for the community plan update. So with this slide, what I have is the original proposal, and I'm prepared to give you updates to the fee that will be reflected with the changes with the 30 dwelling units. The impact fee study proposes an increase in the diff from $9,276 to what would be $12,629 with the 30 additional units. The park component is the largest portion of the residential diff fee. This slide has the city's diff rates for the communities with impact fee studies and shows that the proposed Golden Hill diff is in the upper range, and I'd modify, I'd change that amount to $12,629. It'll stay in exactly the same place. The Golden Hill Impact Fee Study identifies a number of facilities or projects which are needed to implement the goals of the community plan. Key projects which are important to the Golden Hill community are the Golf Course Drive in Balboa Park, bike paths and pedestrian facilities, the F Street Linear Park, and acquisition of Parkland. And these funds would be used to help provide a funding source for those projects. The Golden Hill Impact Fee Study was taken to the community on August 10th, 2016, and the planning group voted unanimously to approve the IFS and a priority list. And then on September 14th, 2016, they voted and modified the priority list. And that list is included in the IFS. That concludes our presentation.
I'd like to conclude, if you don't mind, Council President. As you heard, we did have a slight modification from what was originally presented in the 1472 item summary. I would like to read the revised proposed fees into the record and ask you to direct us to make those revisions into the actual impact fee study. So to repeat, the residential diff would be revised to $12,629. The non-residential mobility fee would remain the same at $233. And the non-residential fire fee would also remain the same at $252.
Once again, what was the total for residential? I'm sorry.
$12,629 per dwelling unit.
And the PowerPoint says a different number. That's correct?
That's correct. So we're acknowledging the difference based on the action that just occurred with the community plan update.
I'm saying that PowerPoint says $12,649.
Yeah, you guys were working a little fast for us, considering the planning group just met and agreed on the PDP version within a week ago.
Okay. So you want 629, $12,629?
That's correct. That's the staff recommendation.
We now have comments from the public.
Opposition Speaker John Stumpf, I don't know if Mr. Stumpf is still present. If not, in favor, David Swerens. You'll be followed by Cheryl Breyerton, both in favor. You'll each have a minute.
David Swerens, Chair of the Planning Group. I just mostly want to acknowledge Mr. Mercer, Mr. January, and their team, the professionalism with which they worked with the community. One or both of Mr. Mercer and January attended several planning group meetings, as well as a subcommittee meeting. Good follow-through at every point, good communication. They met with me in advance of the meeting to organize their presentation, just a model for how the city and community can interact. A few of the proposed programs are less than relevant, we've thought, and our planning group priorities recommended that, and it's low priority. But again, we just appreciate the partnership with the city that this endeavor worked and want to acknowledge that again, as I did at the Smart Growth Committee a couple weeks back. Thank you.
Cheryl Breyerton?
Hi, Cheryl Breyerton, South Park resident since the '70s and homeowner and on the planning committee. I just wanted to say that our number-one pick was to have a bicycle pedestrian path that goes through Golf Course Drive, which would help the Climate Action Plan. The residents of Golden Hill have been wanting that for 30 years, and the city attorney's office has said, well, that is mostly used for throughways for commuting from South Park, not to go to the golf course, so Golf Course Drive funds couldn't be used. So this is why we wanted the diff fees to go for it, so people in South Park could bicycle and walk, and especially because of safety. There's a rec center there, and little kids have no safe path to walk from the rec center over to South Park. So thank you.
Thank you. That concludes the public speakers on this item.
Turning to Councilmember questions and comments, Councilmember Gloria.
Thank you, Ms. Leidner, and thank you, Dave and Cheryl, for those comments. Certainly, Mr. Tomlinson, Mr. January, Mr. Mercer, thank you, gentlemen. Again, not to have short shrift, I'm sure you have families you want to go home to go see yourselves, so I get it. I would move the recommendation, and I would emphasize the points that Cheryl was just making for my folks here in Golden Hill. They certainly want more choices when it comes to getting A to B. As Cheryl mentioned, this would, additional bike facilities would help with the Climate Action Plan, as well as actually allow Golden Hill to access the one and only park that is in that community at Golden Hill Rec Center. So I would hope that as capital improvements are considered, that priority would be placed on bike facilities connecting Golden Hill to other parts of its, not just Golden Hill, but the adjoining communities, Balboa Park, downtown, and a multimodal path on Golf Course Drive certainly has been a top priority for the community for many years now. It's exactly the kind of project that would... It's exactly the kind of project that would achieve the mode shift that we'd like to see as a result of Climate Action Plan. So it is late, you are ready to go. I appreciate your indulgence with this. Nothing in D3 is easy, but that's why you all love coming to my district. So I'd move the recommendation and ask for your support.
So I have a motion by Councilmember Gloria, seconded by Councilmember Cole, to approve staff recommendation on item 331.
With the numbers that were reflected in Mr. Tomlinson's comments.
To be added. Councilmember Sherman?
Thank you, and thank you for bringing this forward. Can you go back to the slide that shows the DIF fees for different communities? And that showing the proposed Golden Hill is, what is that, number six from the top?
It says $12,649. You said, is it the sixth from the top?
Yes, sixth highest is what I'm looking at now, is what it will be if this goes through.
Yes.
With Tierce Santa being the highest, which happens to be in my district.
Correct.
We haven't had anything built in Tierce Santa, and I can't remember when. And I would guess to think that part of the reason is the high cost of DIF fees in that area. You know, we talk all the time about wanting density and more units and more affordability, but every time we turn around, we keep trying to put more and more expense on the developer of those units, and it makes it more and more difficult to have affordable units. How much of the DIF fees in this proposal is for park space? Is it like $92 million, I think it was, or something like that?
Bear with me for a second. So when you look at the Golden Hill, you look at the amount of dwelling units between today and the build-out, and you look at the park component of that fee. There is a 10 anticipated revenue of about $21 million.
Okay. And that is mostly for the park component of the build-out and the plan?
Yeah, we have identified park costs of $39 million, and that's before acquisition of other parks.
And how close is Golden Hill to Balboa Park?
It's right next door.
Right next door. Matter of fact, it says so right in there in the discussion of the community, as it says directly adjacent to one of the largest, nicest parks in San Diego. But those don't count as park space, right?
They can count as park equivalencies.
Park equivalencies, but it's technically a regional park, so it doesn't go in and doesn't get counted, other than equivalencies, which is a lower-end scale, I'm assuming. Well, you know, having a, how many acres is Balboa Park? 1,200, all within like about a six-block walking distance of Golden Hill. I just think we need to look at our park equivalency issues a little bit more. It's like my district in San Carlos. We talk about all the need for all these DIF fees and increases so we can build more parks, but we don't really count the 13,000, I think it is, acres that is Mission Trails Regional Park. And I think that's, I'm not going to get in the way of this today, but it's something we need to look at going forward because it, I think, inhibits the construction of more units that everybody, I think, agrees is we need more units to be built.
We are excited to bring forward the Park Master Plan, and we're in year one, so we're excited to see that through fruition, where we look at park equivalencies, we look at how we define parks, we look at all those issues that you're mentioning.
A lot of times, it would, I think, reduce DIF fees if we could change the equivalency side of things, reduce the DIF fees and encourage more construction, therefore reducing the cost of housing. So, thank you. Just wanted to grandstand a little bit at the end of the night, so.
And I just would like our underwater park off La Jolla to not be counted towards anything in the community plan of La Jolla.
Was there a second on that?
Yes, there is.
Okay. Then I was going to second if there wasn't, so.
By Councilmember Gloria, seconded by Councilmember Cole, to approve staff recommendation on item 331. Please vote. Clerk, please call the roll. That motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And does the city attorney have anything to report out from closed session?
No, no report out. Thank you, Council President.
And we have no adjournments in memory. We will now adjourn council to the special council meeting in Golden Hall on Tuesday, November 1, at 10:00 AM. Thanks very much.